Welcome, everybody. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the City of Nashua, Zoning Board of Adjustment. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting of October 8th, 2024. I'll introduce a few things about the way this board functions, what we'll be doing tonight, a little bit of the logistics, and then we'll hopefully get to the cases pretty quickly. So I'll just try to keep the introduction brief. But so the Zoning Board of Adjustment is an appointed board comprised of citizens of the city. We serve as a quasi-judicial body that basically looks to provide action on relief that's being requested from either what's specified through the city land use codes and/or in concert with the state RSAs. There are generally two kinds of cases that we hear, variances and special exceptions. Tonight, we only have variance requests in front of us, so I'll only speak to how we go through those cases. We have four members present right now. Our ordinance requires that we go forward with our meeting as long as we have a quorum of the board, which is three members, so we will proceed to hear all cases tonight. We still might have a fifth and/or sixth member join us, but we will definitely proceed independent of that. And maybe I'll just go ahead and do the roll call and take care of that part of the business. Perfect timing. So we have present with us tonight four full-time members and one alternate member. Our cases are normally acted upon by five members. We have, the board is actually comprised of five full-time members and up to five alternate members. So again, tonight, we have four full-time and one alternate member. So at this point in time, all five of us will be acting and voting on all the cases tonight. I was just saying that we'll go ahead and just do roll calls. Note that I am the Chair of the Board, as I said in my introduction, and Mr. J.P. Boucher is our clerk. So and then Mr. McCarran, Mr. Neheli are the full-time members, Mr. Patry is our alternate. So but I'll do the formal part of the attendance. So Mr. McCarran?
Present.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Neheli?
Present.
And Mr. Patry.
Present.
And Mr. Shaw is present, and we also have Mr. Carter Falk, the Deputy Planning Manager with the City of Nashua. So he provides guidance to us and ultimately has probably worked with most of you and can follow, you can follow up with him if you have questions after the board meeting. So I'll just talk a little bit about the logistics of how we function. So we will, we basically do have both audio and visual recordings, so the meetings are, those recordings are available both through the city website and then ultimately through the Nashua, joNashua.gov website as well. But we ask that all testimony and all conversation that's part of the meeting be conducted in front of a microphone. We all have microphones up here, but anybody that's, it'll be their turn, just comes up to the podium. We do ask you to state your name and address for the record. And as we go through the cases, the way the case functions, basically through, it's governed by also our bylaws, we take up to 15 minutes of testimony from the applicant initially. And then, and the board will oftentimes have some questions either during or after you've presented your case. We'll also seek if there's any other testimony in favor of the application. And don't know if I said it, but yeah, you have 15 minutes for the applicant, and then all the rest of the times are five-minute blocks, so anybody that wants to come up with, to provide testimony and support will have up to five minutes to speak to the case. If there is anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition, we'll then invite you up to the podium to bring up whatever your concerns or issues are. If, and again, everybody will have five minutes for that. If there is any of that oppositional type of testimony or even just inquiry-type questions, we will then invite the applicant to come back up for a rebuttal, basically, to follow up on any of that. And then if there's more than one person that was in opposition, we'll seek to just have one person come back up and speak his final rebuttal to that. After we finish that part of the business, that's the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, we'll open the public meeting, and that's where the board will basically deliberate and then come to some sort of decision. Typically, it's either a matter of approving or denying. We might table a case depending on if there's special reasons or circumstances where it would be in everybody's best interest perhaps to get additional information or that kind of thing. And after that, that case will be done for the evening. I'll generally try to remind everybody at the end of a case, but I'll just say it now also. Anybody that has, that believes this board erred in our decision has the right to appeal by filing a written request with the city up to 30 days after this decision is made. And there's a, there's basically a process for that, but that could be the applicant if they felt that their, their application wasn't approved and they have a reason they believe we acted basically not following the rules illegally or didn't consider some information we were supposed to, something like that. And likewise, if there's somebody that was in opposition, or it doesn't even have to be here tonight, it could be, it could be a neighbor that learns of this after the fact and then decides that they felt that there was something that wasn't proper about what happened. So that 30-day window will, will commence at, again, after this meeting. So there's always a bit of caution there. You still can move forward with your case if it's been approved, but we'd just like to make sure everybody's aware of how that part of things works. So that's pretty much the logistics of that part of things. And then, you know, we just basically kind of go one case after another following the published agenda unless there's some compelling reason to change that up. The, I, as the Chair, have control over the agenda and can make those modifications, but we typically try to follow the published order unless there's some special need. So I already checked with Mr. Falk, there are no changes to tonight's agenda, so we have six cases before us, and we expect to hear and deliberate on all six cases. And with that, is there anything that I neglected to mention that anybody from the board wants to remind me of? Otherwise, we'll leave it there, unless sometimes trying to do, I don't always remember to, does anybody have any questions just about how the logistics of how things operate? I do know one thing I forgot to mention, just the usual, if you have a cell phone, which most of us do, if you can put it on vibrate or silent mode, and also the acoustics in this auditorium are very good, so we do ask if you have conversations you want to have about anything, that you step out into the hallway and do that, and that's probably about it. So I will go ahead, and what we normally do is we read just the description of the case into the record, and then I'll invite the applicant to come up. And so we'll start with case number one. The owner is Narayan Swami Chaturvedi, revocable trust owner, 3 Sandstone Drive, Sheet G, Lot 615. The request is for variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach six feet, six inches into the 30-foot required front yard setback to construct an attached 12-foot, six-inch by 36-foot front farmer's porch. This is in the R40 cluster zone in Ward 2. Somebody here, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Raman Narayan Swami, 3 Sandstone Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063.
Okay. And if you want to introduce yourself, if you're going to be testifying as well, we just go ahead and have that.
Jerry Donahue, I'm the contractor that hopefully is going to help build this.
Okay.
I'm from Dublin, New Hampshire.
All right, thank you. All right, so you can go ahead and just kind of tell us what you're trying to do and what your justifications are and you kind of.
Sure. So we're trying to build a farmer's porch in the front to bring up the aesthetics of the house, and we'd also like to use that place, that space for our day-to-day, you know, we'd like to sit there and probably enjoy the property. We have enough setback, but we didn't realize that when we applied for the permit that the city had reserved 11 feet from the curb, and so we fell short by six feet, six inches. And that's why we are asking for that variance of six feet, six inches. We are well setback, I think we are setback over 40 feet, but because of the 11-foot reservation by the city, we have to come up in front of this board and ask for the variance.
Yeah, and I'll just note that that's a very common thing for folks, that right-of-way associated with roads oftentimes is, you know, encroaches a lot into somebody's apparent front property, and that can vary quite a bit as well. So I think it trips a lot of folks up, so I'm not surprised that you're dealing with that. But let's see if the board has any questions. Okay. If you have other testimony, you can offer that.
I don't know, we didn't bring a lot of visuals, but I do have three copies of the building plan, which has pictures showing where the house is and set on the property if somebody needs to see that.
Yeah, thank you. I think we got it.
Do you guys have everything that's?
I think we have enough of, yeah, we have some pictures that were with the application and, yeah, the drawings, so I think, I mean, you're welcome to submit it, if you, anything you submit, we do have to keep for at least 30 days, but unless the board sees, I don't, I don't think there's probably any real special need to have any extra documentation, but thank you for the offer. But I think you can probably have a seat, and we'll see if there's any other testimony. Great. Is there anybody here in the audience who would like to provide testimony and support of the application at 3 Sandstone Drive for the encroachment for the farmer's porch? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application at 3 Sandstone Drive? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll open the public meeting. Anybody have any initial thoughts, want to just offer up? Mr. Boucher?
I'm, I'm totally in favor of the application for a couple of reasons. Again, I think it's, it's something that we see a lot of, and I think it's something that, you know, that we can not expect, but we can, we find that, you know, people have use for these, for these porches in the front of the house. I also noticed that, driving down, up and down the street, more towards this end of this applicant's proposed property, there is evidence of this type of front structure in front of the houses, partial or full. Some of them, I'm sure, were built into the house when they were built, but were purposely done that way. So this is not something that would be out of character with the neighborhood, and, and again, I think it would, my personal opinion would be it would add value to the home and to the neighborhood. So for those reasons, you know, and again, you know, I think it, it, all the criteria were fulfilled on what we look at. So again, I think this is, for me, pretty straightforward. I don't see really any, any negative effect of this.
Anybody else have comments? Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I'm also in favor for the reasons stated by Mr. Boucher. Also, when I take a look at the overheads here, this house seems to be just a little bit further towards the street than, than some of the neighbors there, so I think that this, this negatively affected the applicant here. So yeah, I'm in favor of this application.
Mr. McCarran?
Yeah, I would add that I'm also in favor for the reasons that were stated. I did wonder, could it be smaller, could it be narrower? But I think the desire to have a covered entrance is certainly reasonable to keep people out of the elements, and I think, as was expressed, they also want it to be usable. They want to have the ability to sit out there, doesn't seem to infringe on anyone else, and I don't think it'd be out of keeping with character there.
Yeah, my, my biggest thought is you just look at kind of the building box envelope on this plot, and it's very clear that, you know, there's almost nothing to work with on the front. It's a big lot, you know, so there's plenty of overall space, but it just works out that for whatever reason, the house got pushed really far to the front, and great maybe for backyard space, but ultimately, it really works against something like this. So for all the, also, pretty much all the other reasons, I'm also in favor of this. Would somebody like to offer a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'm going to apologize because I'm going to butcher this name, I'm so sorry, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Naray Swamy, Charter Vedi, revocable trust owner, 3 Sandstone Drive, Sheet G, Lot 615, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach six feet, six inches into the, into the 30-foot required front yard setback to construct a, an attached 12-foot, six-inch by 36-foot front farmer's porch. This is located in the R40 cluster zone in Ward 2. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board did discuss it. We did discuss that this, this house on the lot appears to be slightly forward, definitely front, front-forward on the lot, unlike some of the neighbors who would not experience this issue. These farmer's porches are common in this neighborhood. It is certainly within character of this neighborhood. It is reasonable to have a covered entrance and to have an actively usable front porch as the applicant has testified that they would like to use this for. This is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served.
Is there a second? Mr. McCarran? Any discussion on the motion? One thing I'll just, I'll just add even, it was brought up in the testimony, but I do think this is one of those cases also where, you know, there still will be the appearance of a further setback from the actual curb because of the benefit of the, you know, the extra right-of-way land that's highly unlikely to ever be utilized by the city, so that, I think, also furthers the reason that this will still not look like it's encroaching, even if it technically, by measure, to property line would, so. But that's, I just wanted to kind of have that in the record as well. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, that motion passes unanimously. So as I noted, there's a 30-day window of appeal, entirely unlikely, but just be warned that that, something could come up, but if you have any questions, you can also follow up with Mr. Falk. Otherwise, good luck with your project. Have a good night. And we will move on to case number two. The owner is Matt Krissikos. The address is 5 Crestview Terrace, Sheet 3, Lot 104, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to four feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback to construct a front dormer for a second story on an existing house to match the dormer on the rear of the house. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 7. Welcome, can you state your name and address for the record and tell us what you're trying to do?
Yes. My name is Linda Maiolini, 5761 Observation Court in Milford, Ohio, and I'm here to represent Matt Krissikus, who resides at 5 Crestview Terrace, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. I'm here to request a variance to permit the addition of a dormer to the second floor of the residence. This is a property, there's a single-family home, it's currently accommodating his family of five. Mr. Krissikus is seeking permission to add the dormer that mirrors the existing dormer on the rear side of the house. The addition is crucial for maintaining the aesthetics of continuity and the enhancing the home's functionality of his growing family. The purpose of the dormer will enhance the home's overall appearance and contribute to the neighbor, neighborhood's character. There's no negative effects, the design closely matches the existing structure as it is and assures no adverse visual impacts or on the surrounding properties. And Mr. Krissikus has already prepared architectural plans and photos of the current dormer for your review. And also, there are similar dormer additions in the area that have been already successfully approved and demonstrate, demonstrate a trend of aesthetics enhancements in the area, in the neighborhood. And so adding the dormer is vital for his family's needs and will preserve the home's aesthetic integrity. And so we kindly urge that the board would approve this variance and emphasize the benefits to his family and also the community. And so we welcome any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Neely?
We, in the, the packet was a hand-drawn, the property line, the house, the setbacks. Am I, am I reading this right, that there's 15 feet from the curbside, basically a city right-of-way before your property line even starts, and then it's 18 feet from your property line to the house? Am I, is that what I'm reading?
That's correct.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I have just a quick confirmation, so, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but this dormer will not overhang or extend any further than the existing first floor, is that correct?
No, sir, it will not.
All right, that's all I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, sir.
I think we're probably set then from the board, and so I think you can have a seat, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you, sir, very much.
Would anybody else, or would anybody like to testify in favor of this application for this setback encroachment for the front dormer at 5 Crestview Terrace? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that has questions, concerns, or opposition to this 5 Crestview Terrace proposal? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Any initial comments? Mr. Boucher?
Again, it's clear that this predates zoning, so again, house is existing. It's straightforward for me, we're just going up, there's really no more incursion than there is now, we're just going straight up. So we see, we've seen these before. Again, I can, I can't say how straightforward it is, and I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarran?
Yeah, I, I agree, and I would just add, of course, as you stressed, there's no further encroachment beyond the existing footprint. It's a fairly modest-sized house, and so I think the desire to expand it is reasonable, and realistically, there's no other way to do it on the property without gobbling off the backyard or encroaching on another setback. So I support the application for those reasons.
Okay, I think, so heads nodding, so I think we could go ahead, if anybody wants to offer a motion, then we could move forward. Mr. McCarran, thank you.
Um, no, I, I'll probably mess up this name as well, so I'd like to make a motion that the application of Matt Krissikos, owner of 5 Crestview Terrace, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to four feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback to construct a front dormer for a second story on an existing house to match a dormer on the rear of the house be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that the house predates at least the current zoning requirements, that the proposed second-story addition dormer would not encroach any further than the existing house's encroachment, that the desire to expand the house is a reasonable one, and there's no, realistically, there's no other alternative location of the property. Now, we find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance to allow reasonable use of the property, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, certainly we had no testimony to that effect, it's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice will be done.
A second for the motion, Mr. Patry, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? If not, okay, all in favor, that passes unanimously, so good luck with the project, and same caution, there's a 30-day window of appeal, doesn't seem likely, but just again, just be aware that that could happen, and otherwise, you can definitely move forward with whatever permits and, and other actions that you need to take next going forward. And if you have questions, certainly contact Mr. Falk. Have a good night, thank you. We'll move to case number three. The owner is Smack Collective LLC. The applicant is Nari Sun at 74 Northeastern Boulevard, Unit 11B, Sheet C, Lot 2024. The request is for a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Section Number 102, to allow a personal service use for an esthetician and massage business. This is in the PI Zone, Ward 9. Welcome, if you could state your name and address for the record. Now, you can move the whole microphone down.
I'm Nari Sun, and I address 28 East Dunstable Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060.
My name is Kevin Verges, 43 Wood Street in Nashua, and I'm a member and owner of Smack Collective.
All right, great.
So I'm just leasing the 11B unit for 74 Northeastern Boulevard and requesting a change of use. Initially, it was an artwork office, but we'd like to use the office space to perform aesthetics, facials, and lash extensions, so nothing else.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I would just like to add, the, this, this address is in, within North Bridge condominiums. There are other various similar type businesses in that area, as well as within park industrial zones, so I think this is a pretty fitting request here, so thank you.
All right, thank you. You can have a seat, and we'll see if there's any other testimony and go from there. Is there anybody present that would like to speak on, in favor of the application for the use variance at 74 Northeastern Boulevard? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding this application at 74 Northeastern Boulevard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Neely?
This was my first time into North Bridge condominiums. I've driven by many times, I never went in there, and this time, the, the businesses have varied across the board. This is, as I think we're all muttering, this is a no-brainer. I'm certainly in favor of this, there's no reason that this use would not fit in very well with the other businesses that are there. More than enough parking, looks like a very welcoming community for this type of, of business, so I'm in, in support.
Yeah, I'm actually one of those people that have been going there for many years because my first dentist, who then retired, was in the adjacent section, and my current dentist is one of these, who's referenced in the application, so, yeah. But it's, but having driven in there for many years, and actually, my daughter used to take art classes from the woman who's, who had the art studio, so that goes even pretty far back as well. But, so yeah, it's, I've seen those mixed uses, it seems to be very consistent with, with this facility and these condos, so I'm, I think it makes perfect sense and is quite reasonable, so. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarran, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Smack Collective LLC, the owner, Nari Sun applicant, at 74 Northeastern Boulevard, requesting a variance, or a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 102, to allow personal service for an esthetician and massage business be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Essentially, this is a mixed-use site, yeah, I think, you know, pretty clearly, we found that there are a variety of other personal service-related uses within that complex. This is consistent with the overall character of the area, that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect surrounding property values, and it's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
All right, second by Mr. Neely, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? All in favor? That passes unanimously, pretty much the same spiel, the 30-day window of appeal, doesn't seem very likely, but if you have questions, contact Mr. Falk. Otherwise, you're welcome to go forward with your, your business and the, and the plans there. Good luck. We will move to case number four. The owners are Joshua L. and Sarah E. Hoagland, 12 Maywood Drive, Sheet 56, Lot 59. The variance request is from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for an encroachment of 17 feet into the 25-foot required rear yard setback. This is for constructing an addition, excuse me, an attached 12-foot by 16-foot deck. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 3. Is there somebody here for this application? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you're doing on.
Josh Hoagland, 12 Maywood Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm here, I'm the owner of 12 Maywood Drive. I'm requesting a variance to encroach into the rear yard setback of 17 feet, required 25-foot setback, leaving eight feet. There is currently a four-by-seven non-permitted deck by the prior owner, and, or prior owners. I'm here righteously to request 12-by-16 deck overlapping that current four-by-seven. The, I have two correspondences provided by the rear butter and the, from the road facing in, right side of butter, who are most affected by the view of this deck, who both don't have any problems with this deck. It'll be about four and a half feet high at one spot because of the, the elevation of the property and the terrain, it kind of slopes downward. So the upper part will be four and a half, the lower part will be about five and a half. So the, I must note that the back of butter, their yard is about eight and a half feet in elevation to our property. So it kind of goes up on a slant. I think that the, we, we've created on the side of the house a four-and-a-half foot, five-foot almost, walkway coming up from the roadway, driveway, and the deck will have presumably four feet of steps to allow any emergency personnel to come in. I don't think it'll affect the neighborhood, nobody can really see it except these two of butters. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Let me see if the board has any questions for you. Looks like not, so I guess you can have a seat.
Thank you.
See if there's any other testimony and go from there. Is there anybody present who would like to speak in favor of the application at 12 Maywood Drive? As noted by the applicant, we do have two, we did receive two letters from those of butters. I'll just quick, at least paraphrase, read those in. The first folks are, the owner's at 24 Milk Street, where the rear butter. We have no concerns, objections, or otherwise arguments averse to the granting of the variance request or encroach 17 feet into 25-foot required rear yard setback. The addition would in fact add visual appeal from the view of 24 Milk Street, likewise would not distract nor become nuisance to any future development or enjoyment of their property. That's Graham and Susan Catchpole, again, at 24 Milk Street. And then the other abutter is, letter is from Paul M. Cook at 14 Maywood Drive. I am an abutter to the Hoaglands at 12 Maywood Drive. I have no issues with what the Hoaglands are planning to do in their rear yard. So those are in support. And is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the 12 Maywood Drive proposal? Okay, seeing none, that will close out the public hearing, we'll open the public meeting. Any first comments, thoughts? Mr. Neely?
I'm in favor of this application. It is reasonable to have this size deck on, on the back of your house. As noted by the applicant, there is an elevation difference between himself and the, and the back neighbor. The back neighbor's gonna look down on him no matter what, even though there's, there's brush in between. We do have the letters from the, the two of butters, including that, that back neighbor. So I, I do believe that, that this is a reasonable request, and, and I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Anybody else want to offer any comments? Mr. McCarry, sorry.
I, I, I'm gonna just add, I agree, it's a, it's a reasonable use, the, the deck is not oversized. I think the elevation difference makes a difference, and, and that the, you know, rear butter and the other butter are supportive, because they would be the ones who would be infringed on potentially, so I, I think that's clear. But, you know, realistically, there's an existing deck, you know, really too small to be functional, but that is already in the setback. And if my math is correct, I don't think you can build a deck larger than three feet deep and stay within the setback, so. Overall, I think it's a reasonable proposal.
Also, as a note, decks, if they're under four feet in, in height overall, they can go up to five feet to a property line. So he's only within a, a foot or less of, of having this being allowed by right.
Thank you for that question. So, yeah, that just further bolsters the, the support I have for this case. I think, would anybody like to offer a motion? Mr. Patrick?
I move that we approve a variance from, for 12 Maywood Drive from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 17 feet into the 25-foot required rear yard setback to construct an attached 12-foot by 16-foot deck. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant, the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that the variance is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest and will do substantial justice.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. McCarry? Any discussion, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. So same guidance that I've been offering all night, so you can proceed. There is the 30-day window of, 30-day rehearing request or appeal that could be filed, but other than that, it seems like from this court you already have, and the straightforwardness of your case, you're probably not likely to deal with that, but just make sure you're aware, so. Otherwise, good luck, and have a good night. And that'll take us to case number five. The owner is Myra Rose. The applicant is Myra Rose/MJ Contracting, at 139 Amherst Street, Sheet 60, Lot 40. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Sections 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to convert an existing two-family building into a three-family building. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 2. Welcome, and tell us about what you're doing, and use your name and address for the record first.
Myra Rose, 113 East Hollis Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. And it's, it's already existing. It's, I don't know who put that little, I don't know if you guys drove by to go look at it, but it's like a little in-law that's kind of behind it. It's, it was there when I bought the house, and then now my daughter wants to get a mortgage for the house, and they said it's not allowed because it's only zoned for two family. And even though I pulled out the stove and the countertops, it still wasn't good enough. So then, that's why they said, tried to get it zoned for three. And it looked like the tubs from 1970. I had the building inspector come down, and he, that's what he said. And I, I, all I have to do is like, update the floors and the appliances. It's already existing, I don't have to build anything. Put in new windows? I don't know, do you have any questions?
Mr. McCarry?
So I'm, I'm trying to understand, we, we have an email from the building department from 2023, listing a series of what looks like issues that require building permits. Is that something, have you seen this?
No, I haven't seen that. I don't know if, if that's, if I, if I, I know if I changed like the, I know the wall heater's like 1980-something. I have to get a permit for that, but I mean, everything else was already existing. I don't know where that came from. I ca, I looked at, in City Hall, I looked to see if there was anything, like when that was put in, that little apartment, I have no idea. I got the house at auction, and so I didn't even know it was there when I got the house. To me, it just looked like two. So there's nothing, there's no record of anything.
Thank you.
You, you bought it at a foreclosure auction, is that?
I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry, what?
A foreclosure auction?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Falk, you want to just know what you had said in a moment ago, just that there'd still have to be the whole building permits pulled for, for any work?
Yeah, if it, yeah, I'm gonna have to pull, I'm definitely gonna have to pull a, because I have to call an HVAC guy for that. And I did have an electrician come in, but I don't, that was after this. So I told him to get a permit, I don't know if he did. He just came and did the, the box. He didn't really run wires and stuff, I don't know what.
Mr. Falk?
No matter what, they're gonna have to get building permits for the entire, for this unit, you know, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, fire safety. Building Department's gonna have to make sure it's safe before a CO can be issued. So no matter what, whatever that letter says, all those things would have to be satisfied, just like any other property in the city.
Right. That's true.
So you need me to have an electrician pull a permit, even if he doesn't do any work?
Not us.
Yeah.
Or the city, the, the city does?
Well, when you submit your building permit for this, any work?
I'm not building anything, why do I have to submit a building permit?
It's called a building permit, but it's, it's still for work that you're doing. It could be basic renovations, end up being handled by, by building permits, it's just kind of the general name of the.
Even though you say everything's already there and it's existing, the building department did have some issues with the, with the structure, you still have to get a permit to occupy it, because our building safety department is, they're, they will not be able to issue a CO until they're satisfied that the building is safe. And there were some safety issues on that, in that email.
So I go.
By the way, CO, if you don't know, means certificate of occupancy.
They can't legally let anybody live in that structure until they deem it safe. And there were some safety concerns in that email, so they won't, they won't issue that until they, they know it's okay.
Looked like, looked like the electrical issues cited are pretty significant, so just, yeah.
It's the building department, right downstairs.
Building Department, okay, okay.
So if you have a general contractor or a builder in charge of all the construction or whatever needs to be done there, have them submit a, a permit and talk to the building department downstairs.
Building Department, okay.
Actually, I feel like I either, well, just, no, is the, the actual studio-in-law unit, is it in this primary structure, or is it a separate structure?
It's, I don't understand.
Or is it attached in some fashion?
It used to be like the garage, because it had a concrete floor, and in the studio itself, it has a pump, for the, for the water, for the toilet. That pump sits up and over, because it's concrete floor. So I don't know who converted that to that, and then, then, then the other section is on top of that, so I don't know.
My main thing is, it's all connected.
Everything's all, yeah, it's like an L-shaped type house.
So, and, and part of your testimony in, in the application is, at least prior to you owning this, and by all evidence, this, this has existed in this fashion of kind of three units for a very long time.
Seems to be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the board have any other questions? Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I, I guess, there was a lot, a lot of conversations going on there. So looking at the pictures, and it's hard to see from the curbside what, what the building looks like. So it looks like an L shape, and looks like a garage off to the right. We're not talking about the garage, right?
No.
This is all part of the big L shapes?
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
That was the same thing, and actually, on the one view, I couldn't even see the roof of that, so I was getting very, I think it was on the zoom, this zoomed out one, I was, I couldn't even tell, so, okay. It started making more sense, so. And I think because of its history, I think it was all a little bit confusing. I'm sure it is.
Yeah, I'm very confused.
Anything else from the board? Otherwise, I think you can have a seat, and we'll see what happens next. And if you don't mind me asking, I'm assuming the two of you are here for case number six? Okay, so unless you have some comments on this case, we don't have anybody else in the audience for case number five. We don't have any, we didn't get any messages on this one submitted. So, all right, we will close the public hearing, and we'll open the public meeting with no other testimony from the public. Mr. Boucher?
So I, I'm gonna support the application. So I look at this as, so there's two things going on. Whether or not, you know, it, it seems to be credible that there was some, something going on at that time, some type of living situation going on, maybe several years ago, many years ago, but obviously, the applicant doesn't have the history of that. But, and, I look at this as if, even if, even if this wasn't happening and they came in front of us to ask for this, I find, again, we know that any issues are gonna be taken care of by the building department. I look at the lot size, the location, all that. To me, there is, I have no reason to not support the application, simply as, as what it's being asked for. All the issues that are, that are happening with the building, again, if the applicant wants to go through that and, and incur that to, to get this up to the code, that, that's great. But in general, the, I believe that the lot, the building, the location, all supports the, the third unit.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Neely?
I'm sure there's a fascinating history to this building. You know, the applicant is trying to do the right thing. You know, having, having guided through, it sounds like a foreclosure auction, I mean, that's the, the beauty and the fun of a foreclosure auction, you have no idea what you're gonna get when you, when you sign on the dotted line. So the applicant is trying to do the right thing here. As Mr. Boucher said, there's more than enough room in this lot. I, I guess I'm fully in support of this, based on, on, you know, there was, there was a lot of conversations going on there, but just to simplify the whole thing, we know, we need the housing stock, sounds like it had been lived in previously, they're trying to do the right thing, and, and for those reasons, I'm, I'm in favor of this application.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCarry?
And, and just to add, I, I, I'm also in favor. I have to say, I, I've driven by here, I don't know how many times over these years, I had absolutely no idea there were a couple of houses back there, but needless to say that, you know, this is an unusual lot, you know, clearly lacking frontage, and I just note that there are other multifamilies in the neighborhood.
I think, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for a use variance for Myra Rose, owner, Myra Rose/MJ Contracting, applicant, 139 Amherst Street, Sheet 60, Lot 40, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to convert an existing two-family building into a three-family building. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 2. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special condition of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board did discuss, and now realize that this, this third residence, we'll call it a residence, was being used prior to this applicant buying this house through a foreclosure auction. The buyer had no, no idea, the applicant had no idea it was there, but has since decided to move forward with the, the option to bring it up to code. We do note that there are other multifamily residences in the area. This is a large-size lot, set well back from the road, so having a, a third person living in this area will, will not overload any of the services, there's plenty of parking. We do find that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, this will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Patrick, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously, so you can start to proceed, noting that 30-day window appeal. If you have questions, certainly contact Mr. Falk. Good luck. And that will bring us to case number six. And that will bring us to case number six. Uh, the owner is, uh, Robert A. Van Ness, uh, and the applicant is Edward Y. Ovalley and Ovalley Jewelry Corp. Uh, it's sixty Kinsley Street, sheet ninety-six, lot forty-three. The request is for the following variances from land use code section nine, one ninety dash one oh eight, C eight number. Uh, the first one being to exceed the maximum number of wall signs. One is permitted, three is proposed. And secondly, to exceed the maximum wall sign area where six square feet is permitted and sixty-three point four squi- square feet is proposed. Both requests are to maintain wall signs recently installed. This is in the RC zone, Ward six. Uh, welcome and, uh, please, uh, come up and state your name and address for the record and tell us about what you're trying to do and, uh...
Good evening. First of all, our English is not the best, so we'll try. Uh, the address is sixty Kinsley Street?
Your name, please, sorry.
My name is Madeline. Yeah, uh, representing, yeah, all of the business. So, we're trying to, you know, we're requesting this.
Oh, I'm sorry, just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Oh, yeah.
And the microphone will pull out if you'd rather hold it, that is an option.
We are requesting the, thank you, the variance, uh, 'cause we want, you know, we want to get visibility for the business. We want to grow as a new business, um, and, um, all that stuff. Oh, and there, yeah, there's, there was, um, sign, uh, the business before, before our business. Uh, it was the same type, so we didn't know it was gonna affect. You have questions or?
Let's see if the board has questions. Mr. Neely?
So, so the signage is there. Are you looking to add more lights to it or is it what's, what we see today?
Um, we are trying to add lights.
Just like, like spotlights or what?
Light, LED lights?
LEDs, okay.
LED, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay, I think we're all set. Have a seat.
Thank you.
And, uh, obviously, we have nobody else here in the audience tonight, so, so there is no other testimony to be had, uh, from anybody. So we don't have any, uh, electronic or communicating, uh, messages regarding this application. So I will close the public hearing there and open the public meeting. Uh, comments, thoughts? Mr. McCarron?
I, I, I've gone by there several times. It seems as though the signage that's there now is pretty much consistent with what's here before. But I agree, it's dark, it is, it's hard to see the signs. And having, I, I think a little more illumination, uh, would make sense. If I, if I understand correctly, it's not internally illuminated? Is that correct? Yeah, they're, they're outside, so I, I think that, that's reasonable. And I believe there is another one down the street, on the opposite side of the street, that also has external lighting on the sign. So I don't think it'd be in, in keeping with, granted, it's an RC district, but in the somewhat commercial character of the area.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's been commercial operations at that intersection forever.
There, there have been. And we looked in the file and we didn't see a lot of evidence of prior signs that were permitted in that same location. Apparently, they, they just thought they could put it up and that's why they're here, so.
Okay. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I, you know, they're permitted for six square feet. It's a corner lot. Uh, not only is it a corner lot, but it, but it has a, a third angle, um, the way they have the signage today. So it does make sense to have the three signs. Uh, it does make sense to have the sixty-three point four square feet. Um, I think that's, that's very reasonable. Um, having looked at the signage that's already on there, drive by it many, many days, it, it's not overwhelming. Um, and so that, I think the lights will help out as well, so I'm in favor of this application.
All right, thank you. Uh, if not, there's no other commentary, would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarron, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Robert A. Van Ness owner, uh, Edward Y. Ovalley, Ovalley Jewelry Corp., the applicant, uh, at sixty Kinsley Street, requesting the following variances from land use code section one ninety dash one oh eight, C eight. One, to exceed the maximum number of wall signs, one permitted, three proposed. And two, to exceed the maximum wall sign area, six square feet permitted, sixty-three point four square feet proposed. Both requests to maintain, uh, wall signs recently installed. Uh, we, we find that given the, the location of the building and the character of the area, the signage is needed for, uh, visibility. It is difficult to see. We note that it is a corner building, uh, and that it's not inconsistent with signage that's previously been on the building, seems to reasonably, uh, fit within the scale. Um, we, so, I'll, I'll back up a little bit. Uh, we find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, that's for the reasons that I just stated. Uh, we find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We note that there's been a business location at this, um, corner for as long as anybody can remember. I needless to say, it's reasonable to allow them to advertise the presence of that business. Uh, we note that it will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. There was no testimony to that effect, uh, that it would not be contrary to the public interest. I think the public interest would be served by being able to identify the business and substantial justice would be done.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Neely, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously. The caution I've been giving is kind of not really even all that applicable to see and as the signs are already up, so, uh, it also seems unlikely that it would be any sort of window of appeal. But just, there is that thirty-day, that something could happen and your case could, could end up having to come back. But, um, it seems unlikely, so, but good luck with, with your business and, um, thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, we have the rest of our business. Got the, uh, next agenda for the meeting two weeks from now.
Just the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Oh, 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 okay. So the next meeting is on the twenty-second of October and we have, uh, four cases. Is there any regional, um, impact seen? I don't see any myself.
I don't think so. And for the rehearing, I don't think we found regional impact.
We lost, we hadn't, right, so. Okay, uh, so no, no, uh, regional impact for the next meeting. And then we have the minutes from the September twenty-fourth, uh, session. Does anybody have any corrections, comments about the, Mr. McCarron?
So ju- just one, it comes up in a couple of places and part of it's my fault. Um, but on page five, in the middle of the page, speaking in opposition with questions, uh, we note the Eric, um, Eric McNamara of Huhahn Street, I think it's Highland Place.
Oh, yeah, I.
And then on the second.
And then Mr. Shaw said it was Mr. Place in the motion, after the motion.
Yeah, so it was there, in there on page five, it's should be Place. And then, yeah, exactly, in my motion, I said it, I said it incorrectly. And then, and then you, so, so I don't know if we stick in your correction so that it corrects it or... Anyway, I don't know how important it is, but you did note that it was incorrect.
Right.
Oh, yeah, there you are, on page, opposite page seven, never, never mind. I take it back.
Okay.
I, I think it's good.
Yeah, it's fine.
Usually in the motions, we try to do them verbatim, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And then, and then Mr. Shaw made that comment to correct it. I, we thought that.
Well, the only thing is, in this case, is, is, um, is his address actually to Highland Street or is it to Highland Place?
I'll verify.
That would be the, that would be the correction. It would, what my thing was about in the motion, as you were talking about this, this, you know, the location of the property.
Yeah, this one, I think he is Highland Place, 'cause he's immediately next door.
Yeah.
Although I think he's changed his name to, his address to Auburn Street.
Yeah, right. Which is even right.
We'll, we'll double check it.
Okay, whatever it is.
That would be the only thing.
That's the only thing I saw.
Is there anything, anybody see anything else? Otherwise, uh, is there a motion for, please? I'll make a motion to, um, approve the ZBA minutes of September twenty-fourth with that one possible correction for the address for that one, uh, button. Seconded by Mr. McCarron. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. I think that's the end of our regular business. Any other business otherwise? Move to adjourn and we are at exactly seven-thirty.
Oh, shocked.
Me too, actually.
Yeah, I, me, yeah.